All right, good evening. This is the November 25th, 2014 meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 11th, 2014 regular meeting.
A salute.
By Deirdre. Seconded by Laura. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have an opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make a comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. We'll have a brief discussion of Board of Education obligations under the New York law, Section 1125.
I will intend that to be a very brief discussion. Those of you who have been on the Board for more than a few years, you will know that after a presentation to the staff in 2005, we have every year, upon the recommendation of our council, put a brief agenda item on the agenda, and I've just done it in the fall sometime, as a reminder to the Board that according to that section of education law, they, i.e. Board members, as well as teachers, school nurses, school guidance counselors, school psychologists, school social workers, school administrator, are required or mandated reporters, they're required to report any possibility of a child in our school district being abused by an employee or a volunteer in an educational setting. So just so all the Board members know, if that comes to your attention, even secondhand, thirdhand, whatever, you have an obligation as a school Board member to report it. There is a process for reporting that in the information that I provided to you. But again, we do this just as, A, as a reminder, and B, just to go on the record that you're all aware that this is an obligation you have as a Board of Education member, to, again, to report abuse of a student by an employee or a volunteer in the school setting. You're not mandated reporters for instances of child abuse that you may hear of in the community, not connected with the school, but anything that might happen within the school district, you're required to report along with those other individuals. Other members of the staff have different mandated reporter requirements for a variety of things. This is the only one that is specific to school Board members. So just want to let you know, just want to remind you, it's not really a discussion item, it's more heads up, remember this, we let you know once a year, so everybody's aware of it. So, I mean, don't belabor the point or read the stuff to you, so.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Any questions on that? Okay. Thank you, Joe. All right, we're going to be removing item 4.2 from the agenda, so we're going to move on to 4.3, which is discussion of school start time.
Okay. We had our first discussion of this at our last Board meeting, and what we agreed to a few things at our last Board of Education meeting. We agreed to put this on our agenda as a running agenda item for a while, until we've done our work in researching that topic and reporting out to the full Board and the community. We also agreed to establish an ad hoc Board of Education committee to work with me and other members of our staff to go through a process of researching, raising questions, getting answers, presenting it to the Board, and ultimately with a recommendation, potential recommendation, to make some change. Or not, that's, you know, we're not at that point yet. So that ad hoc committee is made up of Laura and Diane and Deirdre Dalbert. Since our first meeting, we set our first meeting and met last Friday afternoon, it was Friday, it's longer ago than Friday, but I guess that was it. We have another meeting scheduled in December before the holidays, and I would probably at this point respectfully turn the reporting out over to the two members of our committee who are here this evening, in terms of what we did last, you know, hour and a half or so last Friday afternoon, so we'll turn it over to the two of you.
Go ahead. All right. Let's see, so the committee first went through some information that Joe had brought us about what other districts are talking about or looking at as far as changing the start time. And then we set some goals, as Joe talked about. It's important for the committee that we include engaging administrators, nurses, social workers, a lot of people in our district, guidance counselors, our athletic director, to get input and help us when we set parameters and when they look, sorry. So we want to engage a lot of members of the community as we go through this process. We're also looking to get parameters, whether that's making it cost neutral, length of bus ride, things like that. We didn't set all those parameters yet. Further down the line, we would involve the community, but that would be once the committee has set, has set more, you know, more definite plan that they're going to bring back to the Board. As listed here in the minutes, we started formulating some of the questions and information that we need to gather to help make that decision. An important thing is the transportation. We're going to get some information about cost and what it would mean if there's anything in the contract with our bus company, looking at several different options. One would be having a single run, K through 12 students. The other would be flipping the chancellor with the high school, middle school, and the other option would be just pushing all the start times a little bit later. So looking at what it would mean for transportation to do all those different options. And there's a list of questions that come into transportation. Like I said, these are just questions that we started formulating, we don't have any of the answers at this time. Another thing that we're looking at is how it's going to affect after-school activities, athletics, transportation schedules. At some point, again, we'll have our athletic director come in and help us look at all the issues that could come up with that. Another thing would be financial concerns, so if there's savings or if there'll be additional costs, things like the facilities, if we change the time, would there be any difference in the heating, the lighting, would there be anything there? Lunches, how would that affect the schedule, would they need, would that have to be changed? And then a big question that we had is how late is enough? Is shifting the schedule a half hour, does that make enough difference, 45 minutes? So we really have to kind of get the answer to that first, because we wouldn't want to make a half hour change if it really didn't provide enough of a benefit, so that's another question that we have. Let's see. It's important for the committee that we're looking at this as more of a health and wellness of our students, more than looking at it for any academic benefit that we might get, or any change in performance, or scores, or anything like that. It's more of a health benefit for our students. So the first meeting was really just, you know, starting to get our questions together, where we need to go from there, and our next meeting, we'll start working on getting some of the information and put this together.
And if there are questions that you guys have that you want us to add to this list, you know, let's, we'd love to hear them, so that we can make sure that we...
Deirdre?
Yeah, so I really appreciate the work you've put into it, just one meeting, you've got a lot done. And I guess I would just, I know the options you laid out are not in any kind of particular order.
No.
But it would just seem to me that, like, you know, sort of at first blush, and also that this was looked at some years ago in the district, that pushing, like, everything a little later is potentially like the easiest thing to do. And so it would seem to me a question that might be answered, sort of alluded to in here, is sort of in terms of the research, what, how much time is enough, which I think the research we looked at was sort of not clear that it had an answer.
Right.
In terms of improving health and wellness. But I would be interested, it would seem like a place, a fundamental question that maybe could be answered more easily, is sort of what's the maximum we could move up, keeping the high school and chancellor in the order that they're picked up.
Right.
With no, with minimal impact on all the things you mentioned.
Right.
Like, you know, bus contract, lunch schedules, you know, contracts relate, any other contractual issues, athletic programming, after-school programming, like, if we came up with that maximum, that might be like a place to just even start, you know, because we knew it. You know, and a single run just seems to me like so, you know, as I said at our last meeting, I really think this, if we make any change, it has to be cost neutral, and that just, I don't see how that could possibly be cost neutral. So, anyway, that, just starting with that other question, which it seems like you probably did, because it's sort of implicit in some of the questions, but might be like a place to start.
Right, I mean, we didn't want to limit anything. Sorry. We didn't want to limit anything initially, just for knowledge without getting all the facts, so that's why we kind of had different scenarios laid out.
Right.
Right, I mean, the easiest thing would seem to be to push everything a little later, but until we know...
Right, like if 25 minutes was, you know, like, we could do that without a problem, and I'm not saying I know that answer at all, then maybe it would be like, well, what if we gave that a try, you know, starting at 7:55 instead of 7:30?
And that was one of our questions, too, that, you know, do we want to do a pilot opportunity where one year we push it, say, 25 minutes, and then we see that there's not really enough of a benefit? Is it too disruptive then in year two to change it again?
Right.
Or, you know, how do we sort of massage those questions and figure that out?
Yeah, I think our direction is to really look at this comprehensively, so we're not doing a piece of this every year. I mean, we want to kind of look at the whole thing, lay it out, collect our data, even if there is an increased expense to, say, the option of doing a single run. I think, I think we're thinking it's worth it to have that cost and at least have that in front of us, because when it gets to the stage that we're rolling a plan or an idea out to the community and then soliciting feedback, kind of, you know, another layer beyond the school research part of it, we'll get asked those questions. Whether that's the way we're going, leaning or not, somebody's going to say, well, how much would this cost? We figure we might just as well do it thoroughly, deliberately, we're not, we're not in a, you know, in a foot-dragging mode, but we're also not trying to throw something together by December. I mean, we want to do it right. We talked about bringing a number of the people that have already been mentioned, like our athletic director, you know, we need to have a sit-down with Mr. Boucher at some point and say, okay, let's say we were to do this, or this, or this, what's the impact on the athletic program? Financially, time-wise, scheduling-wise, that's not something that we're going to, we're going to just be spitballing out. We want to hear from the people who are actually going to have to manage their part of the organizational structure with any of these changes.
Right.
So, you know, I'm anticipating this is, this is going to be at least a several months process. I don't expect us to have any kind of decision or recommendation earlier than, you know, quite a bit later in the school year. So that's, that's how we're inclined at this point.
Another question.
All right.
You mentioned in the notes that Unti or made a decision to change her start time. Do you guys know what they changed to and from?
No, my understanding, and again, I could be wrong, this is based on third-hand information, and my part is that they were direct to start later. I don't know that they've even implemented a plan yet.
Yeah, I actually talked to the business official on Friday. They haven't implemented a plan, and they've actually kind of stepped back and said, well, let's look at it more.
Okay.
It was supposed to go in place next year, they anticipate to go in place, but they had not worked out the details of transportation and that, so they kind of said, let's work out the details first before...
And do you know, you mentioned that Poughkeepsie City Schools changed their start time, you know what time they start at?
Yeah, they, they had been on a 7:00 AM start time, and they've moved that to 8:10. The impetus for that, however, as I understand it, is primarily the fact that the city buses don't start picking up kids until like 10:00, 10:07. So they were having a significant problem with partiness, not due to sleep deficit issues, but due to the fact that kids couldn't catch a bus to school on time.
Right.
So they flexed that schedule later to be in sync with, with the city bus schedule. They don't transport their kids on school buses, their kids are catching, catching the public transportation.
Right.
So that was, that was the impetus there, but they're, they're doing an 8:10 start time now in sync with the bus schedule.
Okay.
One question I have for a single-tier run. When you're constructing it, you can, would you, would you construct it having K-5 buses and then secondary buses, 6 through 12, keeping, you know, the younger kids away from the older kids? Or, you know, it would be fewer buses and quicker if they were K through 12 buses? Something to consider, one way or the other. K through 12 buses, it's going to be, the cost will be a lot less, as opposed to just picking up high school, middle school kids and then elementary kids by the side. You know, that's a philosophy you've got to think about, but it would be cheaper to have them all come in at K-12 if you do a single-tier.
Well, I would...
It's something to consider, it's got to be considered.
Yeah, I appreciate your saying that, and at the risk of making busy work for anybody, which we don't want to do, we want to collect all the data. I mean, we're not going to sit here and say, yeah, we think this is the way we ought to go, so whether it's more or less expensive, that's the way we're going to go. We're going to come to you and say, cost it out both ways. And that will, that will drive, you know, that's one factor that will drive the discussion. So, good point. My response to that's going to be, tell us how, what would it cost either way? And then we'll throw that in the scoop pot and see, with all the other factors that we have to deal with, kind of what, what starts to make sense. So, yes, not either or.
Well, some committees would say, no way, I'm going to put a K-12 bus together, and that's the end of the discussion, don't even run those numbers.
We're not, we're not drawing any foregone conclusions. We're, we want to look at all the data.
Okay.
So, and I think that was really our purpose in having this first meeting, was to try to wrap our heads around the issue and come up with a process that at least the four of us felt we were comfortable with, and we would touch on all the, all the aspects of this matter before even drawing a conclusion or whatnot. You know, we'll also, as we kind of work through this, we'll need to find out from the Board. I know it was mentioned at our last meeting, but, you know, we, we haven't made any formal decision, but if there are parameters, like, if cost neutrality is a parameter for the Board, then I think the Board at least needs to formalize that idea, so when we start sifting through the various options, then we can eliminate things that, say, aren't cost neutral, and if there are any other options, and I don't have, you know, a menu of options, but as we work through this, if parameters develop, we'll need the Board to say, okay, do you want us to, or, like Tom was saying, you know, if it comes up that, no mixing will occur, if that's a, you know, a conclusion we come to, then the Board's going to need to tell our subcommittee, all right, and avoid those options, and well, that will maybe help us narrow the list of options down.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'll just say, you know, certainly a lot of data to be gathered and a lot of thought to be put into the process, but I'm really happy with what we've produced already so far. It seems very encouraging that we're going to put together a good decision-making process.
We hope so.
Okay. So with that, we'll move on to Board Committee reports. So first committee is Finance.
So I did those minutes for our committee, and speaking of cost issues, the focus of the meeting that we had on November 18th was to discuss the financial impact of implementing a district's technology plan. You'll recall that Steve Jensen made a presentation last April, I think it was, to the Board for a five-year technology plan, so Tom and Steve developed an estimated budget around implementing that. And initially, we just sort of reviewed some of the items in the budget, some of, and, you know, Tom updated us that the infrastructure work over the summer is complete around the wireless stuff, which is sort of part of that plan, but has other financing mechanisms to it, we're talking more about going forward now. Talked about issues related to smart boards and that kind of, those kind of pieces of hardware and challenges with that kind of technology, and how technology, you know, sort of comes and goes quickly. As, as you all know here, the five-year plan calls for one-to-one model, K-12, so that each student has his own device. And that process has started at chancellor, where the teachers, K-5, will have a device, it's K-2, an iPad Air, and a MacBook Air for 3rd through 5th grade, and there are carts in every, at every grade level in the library. So, you know, we had a conversation about where that is at now. Over five years, though, Tom estimates, I know that, you know, those numbers are still going to be being refined, but we're looking at somewhere between 1.5 and 1.7 million over five years to implement the one-on-one, one-to-one model. We talked about sort of how that would get financed, potentially through BOSI's, a lease purchase agreement. We looked at numbers for three-year lease purchase. And, you know, overall, the committee expressed some concern about those numbers, and the budget is, is in your booklet as well, as it's, you know, in its preliminary stages. We talked about essentially, you know, two things, either, you know, what are the sources of revenue to fund this over the next several years? And if it looks like it's too, too much of a burden for the district, are there ways to change the plan? You know, what are minimal requirements for the plan, technology-wise? So, you know, for example, one possible source of revenue is that smart monies, the referendum that was recently, was passed on Election Day, that's supposed to provide monies for school districts for technology purposes. But there's been no notice, at least at the time of the meeting, from the state about how much money we would get and what the parameters for using that money are. So, you know, when that happens, of course, is challenging, and how, you know, it's just a big question mark now. We could also look at spreading the lease purchase over more years, we could, if we really felt solid in the budget, exceed the tax cap at some point, because that's obviously the biggest issue, is the tax gap, in terms of how much money we can actually add to our budget year to year. We could do our own bond referendum, we certainly can continue to seek support from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation. But, you know, at the same time as we develop this budget, we have to look at possibly, you know, where could we rein in the, the plan itself and alter it and change it in a way that still moves us forward with technology, but also maybe is not the one-to-one model. So Steve's going to start developing a Plan B, and we're going to start looking at a sort of refined budget over time. But as Tom pointed out, and we've talked about around this table, you know, certain costs are unpredictable. Like this year, we do have higher special education costs with, I think, Tom, you said that we doubled the out-of-school placements for special education students this year. So that budget, that item is going up quite a bit, and so we have to be really thoughtful about how we're going to continue in this direction each year, knowing that, you know, we're working in tight parameters and taking on, you know, the question, too, is like, similar to what you were saying, Joe, about going down the road with busing and then like changing it, you know, we want to have a plan that we can afford and we can stick to, we don't go down a road that halfway there, we're saying, you know, we can't do this anymore. So, it was a good, really thorough discussion. I appreciate Tom, Steve's work, working together on this, and, you know, there are possibilities. It's just, we live in, you know, we have a squeeze in money, so. Any questions?
Laura?
Yeah, I've, you know, got lots and lots of things. My, my concern is that we start downgrading this process, this technology integration. You know, it feels to me a little bit like we haven't figured out where we can repurpose funds, and maybe that's not the case, I'm not on the Finance Committee, so I'm not sure if this is just, this is what it would cost, so we can't really plunk that into our budget, or if we've tried to massage where we can repurpose the money that we currently have in our budgets for use for this. It seems that last spring, we were all very much in favor of Steve's technology plan, in large part because one of our goals was technology integration, K-12. You know, in the notes, there was a mention about, you know, the district's opt-in philosophy, and I understand you can't make anybody use equipment, but if we're going to be providing technology for instruction, then we can't do that in just some classes and not others. So I'd caution us to look very carefully about not leaving anybody out in this process, any students out. So I'm looking forward to seeing what creative ways you're going to come up with to find all this money. But I wonder if, if there's any mechanism in place where the district can go out and seek outside funding besides just government grants and the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, if there's ever been grant writing from these big foundations that are technology companies, Sony, Toyota, Honda, they all have big granting bodies, and I don't know that we ever look at that, or if we have a way that we can do that, but it might be worth doing a little research.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say that I don't think, you know, I think the committee is interested in trying to implement the plan as it exists, but, you know, to begin, to just be really cautious about it and to see, I think it's just prudent to consider, I think, you know, certainly repurposing other funds is, places in the budget is worth, worth looking at. But, you know, I think we just also have to be prudent and say, okay, if we, if we determine that this does seem like too much money, or within this timeframe, you know, what, what gets us movement and a good integrated technology curriculum for our students that doesn't cost as much, you know, seems like a good question. So I think the purpose of that discussion, or the way it led, was sort of to look at both things, you know, just to be, to be, to be realistic. But the numbers, you know, as, as Tom, Tom let us know, the numbers are still being refined, and even the, the numbers in this, in the packet are better than the numbers we had looked at initially that day.
Yeah, I actually went through and really looked at the rate, the time in which I looked at our estimated enrollment going out, you know, because some of this would be intended for a few years.
Right, right.
Looked at the total pupils in that range, and then added another somewhere from 5% to 10% for, for, you know, things that get broken and got to be swapped out, and that can be repaired, and, you know, you don't know, just so, there's a little, little cushion, but not a lot of cushion. And I think the other thing that has not been determined, this, we were trying to create a... create a worst-case scenario going with the Mac Airbook as opposed to some other type of, you know, laptop or tablet.
You mean that, that costs?
Yeah, so we haven't determined at the middle school and the high school exactly what type of technology they're actually looking for yet, starting at the bottom and working up. So they started discussions, but no determination has been made as to exactly what type of devices they do need.
Right.
But we decided, let's go with the worst-case scenario. I don't want to say worst-case.
Financial.
It's not the worst-case scenario.
Most expensive.
The most expensive, you know, scenario that we thought, just looking at tablets and iPads and that. So we want to give the most expensive financial package we'd be looking at. I think everyone we look at from now on will be somewhat lower, you know, looking at three, four, and five-year leases. And it could be a change to the type of device that's being used. I don't think that's really been determined. I know it hasn't been determined yet.
Right.
It's only been at the elementary level where they decided what they want. So I know the discussion we're having up here.
Go ahead, Diane.
I think something else that started to seem apparent during the meeting, not just the financial issue, but that the timing of this, that maybe going to one-on-one next year at Chancellor, you know, that we're not quite ready for that, that, you know, some of the staff is maybe not ready, are not ready to use that. There's a lot of questions, it seemed that weren't answered yet as to how some things would work, or, you know, if the devices that were picked, you know, if they're going to be the right devices, because the cards have just gone out recently, not that they're even out.
Yeah.
So, you know, they really have to determine if this equipment purchased is the right thing for those grade levels. So I mean, the worst thing that we could have is purchase all this equipment and it not be used.
I don't want that.
So I have a concern about the time, timing of it, too, that we may not, you know, we might need to pile it or use the cards more and really get a sense of, you know, some of the questions that came up in the meeting. Most of here.
I just, I think, you know, nobody on the finance committee is saying that, you know, we shouldn't spend the money.
No.
You know, it's just under tax cap and other financial considerations, you know, and the budget as a whole, that we just have to be prudent about how we're spending money on technology. So certainly, as we go along, I'm sure we'll figure out a way to make it work. But I just think it's important that we take that into consideration as we move forward.
Yeah, so, and to follow up on all that, you know, it's noted in the minute that we asked Steve Jensen to come to a board meeting, maybe at the end of January, February, to sort of talk about how the technology that's there already at Chancellor is being used. Because, you know, there are stories of school districts making big purchases for products that aren't really, you know, the question is not just are teachers using them, but are teachers finding them useful, right? So how is the technology helping the curriculum? And, you know, we just don't want to commit ourselves to a whole program that's hard for us to meet the cost of without, you know, careful consideration. But again, as Mark said, it's not that nobody, that anyone in the committee doesn't want to do it. We just think that it makes good financial sense to do it cautiously. And, you know, if we had a different, you know, perhaps if we didn't have a tax cap, this would be a different conversation.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so we'll move on to the audit committee.
Those were my notes. Unfortunately, we didn't have the annual audit for you, but hopefully next meeting we'll have it to present. But as we reported out last time, there are no major findings, and the audit was good. Our meeting focused mainly on the look, the search for an outside community member for the audit committee. We went through the material that we'd like to have on the district website, as well as the application for prospective members, which are included in your packet. We'd also like to sort of advertise this out in our local papers and through our internal school newsletters and that kind of thing. Joe, of course, will tweet about it. And we'll ask the PTSO and the Rhinebeck Community Forum Chamber if they would be willing to post the availability of the position also. We're going to get this information out, we hope, in the beginning of January, and then by the 31st, have some applications that we can look at so that we can interview at our February meeting. So if anybody has any feedback about the application itself, or what we've got on the district, what we'd like to have on the district site, that'd be great.
Okay. Questions or comments? Okay.
Yeah, I will just, for the sake of the public or people who are watching this at home, the impetus for adding to this committee?
The impetus for adding to this committee is because the collective knowledge of the committee, it should have financial background, and none of the collective knowledge, except for Tom, who's an invited guest, has that in-depth information. So we'd like to have applicants who have either auditing or financial backgrounds so that they can read an audit and understand everything that's in it and ask good questions.
Okay. So the next committee is facilities. I did those minutes, so I'll report on those. So the facilities committee discussed the RFP that we're working on with BOSI's and as well as Spack, Kill and Millbrook School Districts for an architectural firm to do the 2016 building condition survey. BOSI's has gotten pricing from several vendors, and there's quite a wide range in the pricing, which is based on the square footage, and goes from 3 to 20 cents per square foot from the lowest vendor to the highest vendor. Apparently, there are two leading vendors. And BOSI's will probably pick two or three of the vendors that gave proposals, and we would not be obligated to use any of them, but, you know, we would get, if we go through BOSI's to hire an architect for the BCS, we would get 40% back in BOSI's aid. So it's an important consideration, you know, in making a choice on the vendor. So we're looking to have each vendor submit a sample building condition survey for us to look at and review to see if their proposals meet our needs. We would like to use the same architect to do the BCS that we may want to use for a future building referendum if we decide that we want to, you know, do a capital project that includes BCS items that are, you know, items that are found when we do the building condition survey, or any other items that we've been talking about in our five-year plan. So more to come on that. All right, any questions? Okay. Next committee is policy committee. I also did those. So we reviewed a number of policies that we had looked at earlier and wanted to go back and review them again to see if there was any necessary revisions. There's only a few of them, mainly policies that need regulations to go with them. So Joe's going to be working on those. And there are actually a couple of policies with changes that are in our packet tonight for voting on, for first reading. So we're making progress on our review of policies, and hopefully we'll get that, I don't know if we're going to finish this year, but hopefully in the next year or so, we'll finish reviewing the whole manual.
You're making a lot of progress.
Certainly are.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, we were looking for a policy on professional development, and so Joe was going to ask and see if there was one out there somewhere that we could take a look at, and so we don't have to reinvent the wheel to create a new policy. All right, questions? Communications.
Deirdre Del Bear did those.
Okay.
Since my name is Deirdre, I'll do them all. So Deirdre and Joe reported on a, the Westchester-Putnam-Duchess Joint Superintendent's School Board meeting in Tarratown. And the message of the meeting was the importance of advocacy and communication on the part of school leadership to advocate for public education in this time when public schools are getting disparaged statewide and nationally. And so we did have a conversation a little bit about, you know, just reinforcing amongst ourselves the need for all of us to show leadership individually and as a district, the value of public education in a democratic society. And, you know, it can also feed into the work that we as a board have wanted to do in terms of celebrating the accomplishments of people within our own district, but that work also has to happen sometimes at the political level, as we already know, when we do advocacy at the state level. So in multiple, multiple locations, it seems like the message was, school boards and superintendents need to be leaders in this area. In terms of additional communication, at that time, the RCSD Twitter account had 96 followers. I believe it's over 100 now.
120.
Not that it does count.
Well, dang, Joe.
I think there was a varsity soccer boost.
There was a boost from that.
We encourage everyone here who's listening later to follow Rhinebeck Central School Districts on Twitter.
Especially on snow days.
Snow days, lunch menu, and links to, you know, an occasional important article or news related to public education. So that's been really positive. We talked about this communications survey that the committee began to discuss last year, and we tried to sort of refine what it is we want, you know, to survey our community about. It seems like one of the goals, and we still have to refine it, is to try and find out through survey how we can improve our communication strategies with all members of our community, that being students, parents, community members, teachers. And we talked about how that might happen, how a survey might happen, who could conduct it. We looked at a couple of models, including one from Johns Hopkins, and then also talked about the possibility of perhaps partnering with a researcher from one of the local colleges to help us. So that's something we're continuing to work on. Steve Jensen is a part of the committee, and he talked about the continuing work he's doing and updating the website. You know, we're building a new one that we're hoping might come live in January. Steve and our consultant have done a great job communicating with a lot of different groups at the school, teachers at different grade levels. We'll be meeting with guidance and library to talk about what their particular needs are as far as the new website. So that's exciting. Oh, and also as a part of that, I think it's important to note that the district is arranging for student email addresses for pupils in grade six through 12. So that'll really help facilitate a certain kind of communication that we, you know, haven't had before, or not consistently at least. And next meeting, we're going to talk additionally about how to celebrate accomplishments within our district. We always note that, particularly when the principals are here every month to do monthly principals' reports, there's so much good going on. So how can we, as a school board and a district, help communicate and support all the great accomplishments of the students and staff here at the district?
Okay, questions?
Just your topic for next month about, which is one of our goals, about making more time for celebrating our achievements, I would just say it'd be nice if we could bring some of the people here to our board meeting, and then everyone at home could see them, and whether it's students, or teachers, or projects, anything. I think that, you know, one more pat on the back, even if there's only a few of us here, would be a nice thing to do.
Yes, and you've been advocating for that for a while. So it is on my mind, but I'm glad you're mentioning it again, because it'll be, we'll have to talk about that at our next meeting. Thanks for the reminder.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so move on to a discussion of potential programs and services for the 2015-16 budget.
Okay, this is, it's an interesting discussion on the heels of the recent finance committee discussion about technology plan, but it's an important discussion nonetheless. It's also, as the board has requested the administrative team to do over the last several years, it's really the first, the first formal discussion of the 2015-16 school budget under development. This is really the start of the budget development process. And I think this is, I think it's the third year, at least the second, perhaps the third year, that we've started the budget development process a lot earlier than we used to. The feedback from the members of the board has been positive that we provide ourselves the extra time to, excuse me, to have these budget-related discussions. Anyway, I want to frame the context of this list that I provided to the board members in your packet. Several years ago, the board asked the administrative team to develop a list of potential programs and services to add to the programs and services that the district currently offers that the board might be able to consider, depending on how the overall budget development process pans out over the course of the next several months. So we've done that for the last several years, and we've done that again this year upon the board's request as part of our budget development process. So I want to bring a few things to your attention to contextualize this list. Number one, the items on this list are not, are not rank ordered in any way, shape, or form. In fact, they're listed in alphabetical order.
No, they're not.
They're not listed in alphabetical order. Total random order.
Total random.
Okay, that's even better. So that's, that's something to be aware of. The other thing is that there's, my direction to the administrative team in soliciting these items from them is that nothing that is a need should be on this list. These are all wants. If they're a need, then they need to be built into the, into the budget, and, you know, we'll discuss those needs within the context of gotta-haves. None of these are gotta-haves. They're nice-to-haves. They would enhance our programs and services, no doubt, if any of them were able to be, to be fit into the 2015-16 budget. And I don't say this to downplay the list, just to contextualize it. If we were not to be able to do any of these things, we would be conducting a robust program again next year. But any of these things would add to, what we think would add to the services and programs that we're able to provide our students. And they run the gamut from financial support to add additional courses that we don't currently add, currently offer. There is, there are items on this list that would provide money to There is, there are items on this list that would provide money to expand some services that we currently have. There, you will notice, there are a number of requests from the building principals for additional technology that is not necessarily on the technology plan, but would enhance the technology, say, in the high school or the middle school. And that's, let's see.
Laptop part.
Yeah, right. Those are the kinds of technology requests that had made it onto this list. There also are a few items we listed under the heading of district only because they cut across multiple schools or school buildings as opposed to being targeted toward a specific school building. There are a couple of items there that had been requested in the area of school safety. And then there are a number of items under the category of facilities which would, if included in the budget, would address certain facilities' needs, you know, storage needs, the idea of asbestos removal in classrooms where asbestos is not an issue, but to be proactive in replacing that. That we discussed out last year, that was on the list. Last year, we did not budget for that, and so it'll continue to be on the list as long as, in this case, Sheldon Teeter, our Director of Facilities, feels that it is something he'd like to see done. Again, we, doesn't have, none of this has to be done, but if they, if any of them were able to be worked into the budget, there are potential upside in terms of programs and services. Another caveat that I would throw out there is that, and just in terms of process, what we've done the last few years is, as kind of a next step, we've asked the administrators who generated these lists to prioritize these themselves. Again, these are not prioritized items. And then the third step in that process, after they prioritize them, is essentially for me to prioritize the whole kettle of fish, as it were, and designate what I feel are district-level priorities. Obviously, if everybody has a number-one priority, that's not necessarily something we may be able to afford everybody's top priority. So by necessity, I go through this list with the assistance of Tom and in consultation with those administrators to say, okay, well, it may be your number-one, but looking at the whole picture, it falls to maybe the fourth most important item, in my opinion. And obviously, I have justification for my ranking, but that's like three steps down the road. And this plays out over the course of the next several months, and it happens concurrently with our looking at, the next part of our budget process is, and I think we have this slated for early December, which is to look at the rollover budget, which is another piece of the budget process. We kept everything the same, and we just rolled it over and accommodated for what we anticipate are the normal cost increases for certain things, contractual increases, et cetera. What would our increase look like? That's when we start to look at that rollover budget relative to the tax levy cap, and that's part of our process for distilling this into a budget that we ultimately decide on in April to bring to the voters in early May. So this is kind of a first shot at what we might like to see in a perfect world, which we know it isn't. And then that kind of sits off to the side as we work our way through the things that we know are requirements. So that's the list and the context, and it's a very rough list at this point in time. It's not refined anywhere near, nearly as well as it will be within the next couple of months.
Laura.
Understanding that it's rough. Can you speak a little bit more to the co-curricular activity clubs and the project lead-the-way section that Ed would like to, in a perfect world, be able to add?
I will, in a very rough way.
Okay.
As we're being rough here. My understanding, and Ed will be here, all the principals will be here at our next meeting, and some of them will probably discredit what I'm going to say, but to the best of my knowledge, Dr. Davenport has, I like what you said there.
Yeah.
Dr. Davenport has, yeah, yeah, no, I know. Has received a number of requests based on interest from students for clubs. And these are things that we didn't budget for. We didn't need to know about them last year to budget for them for this year. So he is anticipating that at least some of those interests will carry over into next year, and he would like budget support to be able to offer those. In terms of project lead-the-way, you asked about that, right? That, again, we're spitballing that one, too. If we were to add the third, we currently have two project lead-the-way courses we implemented at the high school. We implemented the first one last year. We're implementing the second one this year. And the logical conclusion would be, if there continues to be interest, to justify adding the third in that series of courses. He's asked for a placeholder in the potential programs and services budget to accommodate for that. And that's, honestly, that's as far as it's gotten. I believe that in terms of project lead-the-way, after the first two foundation courses, this is where a school district that wanted to offer more courses in that strand would have to make some decisions. You know, we'd be talking about biomedical, there's a biomedical engineering strand, and there's another, kind of a more traditional, straight-ahead engineering strand. So, I mean, we haven't even made those decisions. But again, at a very early time in the budget development process, he's thinking, well, should we be in a position to offer the next course in that sequence? He wants to make sure we at least have a placeholder on the horizon to do that, should that be a direction where we want to go, can afford to go, that there's student interest in supporting us going that way. Again, just a reminder, I believe the entire project lead-the-way high school sequence is a five-course sequence. And we decided early on that while offering a full sequence is kind of an ideal out there someplace, that the reality of it is that there are financial implications, there are implications tied to student interest. Do we have enough students who want to pursue this past the initial courses to justify the kind of money that would cost to offer them? And I think we've taken the posi, I'll speak for myself. I've taken the position that any courses that we can offer in the area of pre-engineering are more than we've been able to offer up to this point. And the more we offer, the better. But even if we never offered more than the two we're offering currently, we're still sending kids on to college who have an interest in that field, who are better prepared than those same kids would have been three years ago. If we can add additional courses, if we could someday have the interest and the financial support to offer the entire sequence, you know, that'd be great. If we couldn't, I think we're still doing good things to help kids with an interest in that area. So that would be just the next step in the sequence.
Okay, thank you.
Diane.
I'll keep my questions for next time, the individual questions.
Yeah, that would be very good, if you want to get accurate.
I will. But I appreciate the administrators putting this together. It was exciting to read through the list and see all the items, places they want to go. Not the number side of it, that wasn't as exciting to look at. You know, but I think even with the tax cap, I think it's important to do this, to look at where we want our school to go and the improvements that we want to make, and trying to make ways to happen. There's so many things on here that could greatly, you know, prove that already good skills, but I'm glad that we still do this, and it's exciting to read some of the things.
Okay. Deirdre.
Yeah, I'll just ditto what Dian just said. I think it's, you know, a really useful thing to have in front of us. You know, obviously, there are a lot of, it needs to be refined in all the ways you said, so I'll reserve questions about each one for, you know, a time when it seems like we're closer to decision-making.
Okay. All right. Any others? All right, so move on to good news.
Well, I'll only mention that I got some information today that the Duchess County Legislature has contacted us and wants to do some special recognition for our state Class C championship boy soccer team. We're also, as we, as we did for the, it may be hard to press to nail the year, but as we did for the previous girls' state championship softball team a few years back, maybe four years? Yeah, that's what I was thinking. We did have a very nice ceremony. At that point, it was springtime, and we were outside in the back. I don't think we're going to be doing it there this time, but there were already some plans in the works to do something special for that team as well. I've heard the date of Friday, December 17, thrown around as a possible date, so you might want to just put that on your, as a placeholder on your calendars. But those plans are just coming together now, so I think, and we're trying to maybe meld the recognition from the Duchess County Legislature with that possibly. So we'll keep you posted. Also, we have the parent, parent university.
Parent university?
Academy.
Yeah, it's academy, not university. That's Red Hooks Program, University, Brilliant Academy. Because we're starting out. We'll be a parent doctor program shortly. But that program is a Saturday morning, December 6, and looking forward to engaging our parent community in that program, see how that goes, and how we might be able to develop it beyond the initial program.
Diane.
I had the opportunity last week to see the seventh-grade improv presentation of Salem Witch Trials, Mr. Fishkin's seventh-grade class, and it was amazing to watch these kids and Mr. Fishkin onstage with them, doing improv and acting out the trials. So to learn history through art, it was a great collaboration and really, really exciting. I heard many parents and students say it was their best week of class.
Great. It's fun. Great.
Deirdre.
Yeah, so I just want to note about the soccer championship, I just want to sort of acknowledge the many community members who came out to those games. You know, people in the community who maybe had played soccer many, many years ago here at Rymeck, or graduated soccer from Rymeck High School, or maybe didn't, but just came out to the games. And it's just really a nice testament to the support our community does give our school system that, you know, so many people came out to really just support the kids and the school district. So that was just a nice feeling to have.
Okay. Any other good news? Okay. Move on to old business. We met items of old business. Okay. Public comment. We have another opportunity for public comment?
Yes. I think this is even more.
Okay. Take that into consideration.
What'd you say, Bill?
Okay.
duly noted.
Other. Any other items? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to action items. Does anyone have anything to remove from the consent agenda? Okay. So may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
Second by Laura. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept grant awards from the Rymeck Science Foundation in the amount of $4,160, as stipulated, in the support of the implementation of the following. Citizen science grant, as submitted by Ms. Kristen Kogle, in the amount of $340. STEM Fair 2015 grant, as submitted by Ms. Allison Vacarino, in the amount of $1,720. Jeff Boyer Fund with Energy grant, as submitted by Ms. Barbara Rizzolo and Ms. Sarah Seefarth, in the amount of $600. And music composition with iGuitars and iPads grant, as submitted by Ms. Laura Natalie, in the amount of $1,500.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
Second by Laura. All those in favor?
I just want to make a comment.
Go ahead.
No, I just want to thank the Rymeck Science Foundation for, you know, providing the opportunity for these grants for our staff. It's exciting stuff.
I'd also like to thank Mr. Nat Charney, who, in anticipation of the board's approval of this series of grants, has provided me with the check that will make those programs out. So thanks, Nat.
All right, all those in favor? That's unanimous. I'm, "A motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional coaches and advisors for the 2014-15 school year in accordance with the 2014-15 RTA salary schedule. Boy swimming, varsity, Michelle Fountain, $4,436. Girls' basketball, JV, George Nicolatos, $3,070. And assistant boys' basketball, varsity, William Poynes, volunteer."
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
Second by Laura. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Bill Carney as head basketball chaperone for the 2013-14 winter sports season at a stipend of $455 in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2014-15.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I may have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers for the 2014-15 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I may have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept a 2014-15 ExxonMobil Fuels Educational Alliance grant in the amount of $500 for Chancellor Livingston Elementary School for the maintenance and support in the area of math and/or science through the sponsorship of Mr. Richard Matthews and Rymeck Mobile.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Laura. Any discussion? Deirdre.
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Matthews. You know, every year, he makes these grants to the school districts, and it's appreciated that he considers the school district in his way.
Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I may have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a first reading the consideration of modifications to board policies 1100, Public Information Program, 1145, Advertising Materials and Announcements, and 6910, Reporting and Investigation of, excuse me, Reporting and Investigating That's unanimous. That motion passes. I may have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept mini-grant donations from the Rhinebeck PTSO in the amount of $198, as stipulated.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Laura. Any discussion?
Again, I mean, you know, we're just, again, I know, we have many meetings, we have many people to thank, but from Mr. Matthews to PTSO and the Science Foundation, as well as my previous comments about how many people come out to the soccer games, it's just nice that we get so much support from our community.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I may have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional summer 2014 clerical work.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I may have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional summer 2014 clerical work.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. I may have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the revised 2014-15 school tax bills totaling $2,325.12 in reduction adjustments, and to make the appropriate refunds to the property owners if required.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. And may, where are we?
Let's have a brief executive session, collective bargaining.
I may have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of collective bargaining with our anti-bargaining unit.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Were you voting there, Nat?
I'm going to privilege the audience. You have two students here who need to get their forms signed for seventh class. Can you get that done before you go on to the second?
Absolutely. Absolutely.